What is it, 7:04? 3:04?
3:02.
3:02, okay.
At least on my clock.
Okay, 3:02 on my clock, too. Okay, so. So has everybody read the minutes?
No, I will admit to having not read the minutes.
Okay, well, I had one. One suggestion, but one recommendation that in paragraph two, when it talks about. Talking about minimal discussion of articles one through four, if we could. Include in that that we were talking about the bylaws. Because that wasn't clear.
I think that is a friendly amendment.
Yes.
So if you all would like to approve the minutes with that friendly amendment, we'll make the changes for the posting copy.
Okay.
Approved, approved.
Somebody to move it and second it and then approve it.
Right, I still move.
And second.
Somebody else has to second.
Okay.
Gary seconded it. Okay, great. Okay. So we have on our agenda, we have. We're going to be reviewing the bylaws again. And Jessica, do you have them?
Me too. Would you like me to pull up a? Clean copy with the edits that you've made so far, or a working copy that shows the edits you've made so far?
Um, I would like just a clean copy. What about everybody else?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, this is what, the third time we've looked at it?
Yeah. Okay, so everyone should be able to see my screen with your bylaws on it. Is the size okay? Okay, and this is the clean copy, so it's not the approved copy right now, it's a copy that incorporates all the edits that you have already recommended.
Good, good. Okay, so why don't we go through item by item and then if we have anything we want to talk about will be, you know, in sequence, not out of order. So Nameth Library. Yes. The objectives which reflect the Virginia Code, we worked on those. Any discussion on that on Article Two? Nope. Article Three, Membership. Again, we've included wording that reflects the Virginia Code. Any discussion?
No. What's the footnote? Wait, I'm gonna try and pull up the regular document as well.
So the footnote number one. Is each Fairfax County Supervisor District.
Oh, right.
And the two footnotes are both listed at the bottom of the document.
Right.
Since we're looking at the footnotes now, I, we had several questions. That Christine answered for us. A point is, does anybody, do you have that? You don't have that, I bet.
I do.
Would you pull that up, please, Jessica?
Yes. Have to find it. So this is the email that Christine had sent you all. For inclusion in this meeting, so the questions that were asked were. Do the Library Board of Trustees serve at the pleasure of the appointing supervisor, or is it different since they are voted on by the full board? And the response from the county attorney's office, as noted here, is that trustees do not serve at the pleasure, in quotes, of the board supervisors, because once appointed, a trustee can only be removed by the full board if there is some kind of misconduct or neglect of duty.
Right.
So they recommend the two highlighted parts here, that they're nominated by the board of supervisors and appointed by the board supervisors.
And we had quite a long discussion about that, and I don't think any of us really understood. That part of it, I really appreciate Christine tracking that down for us, but we don't include this any place in the bylaws. And I think that from the discussion we had at the board meeting, again, there was some confusion about exactly who. You know, why we're there and who has appointed us and, you know, who we're serving at whose pleasure. So I think that I would like to see this included in footnotes, maybe right along with that number one.
So is this saying then that there's some type of meeting at which the Board of Supervisors approves? The nominate, or whatever the word is, if it's not nominate, appointment of each of us? Oh, I didn't realize that actually happens.
Yes, so the Board of Supervisors meets once or twice a month as a full board for a regular meeting, not for committee meetings.
Right.
And typically, once a month, they approve a slate of board authority and commission appointments. The form, it's really long, because there's 96 or 100 different board authorities and commissions in the county. But the document is put forward to the full board supervisors and it is moved by the full board supervisors. There isn't typically a ton of discussion or any.
Yeah, no, I.
Yes, that is, that is how they handle that.
All right.
So Sheila, are you asking for a new footnote to be added, or do you want a third section in membership?
Let me see. I think it should be a footnote. For brevity and, you know, it makes it a nice clean, but we have, for number one, we had each Fairfax County Supervisor. District is represented on the library board, and then, you know, the addition, I'm thinking. It should maybe even have its own, its own number two, or somehow be incorporated, number one. Because I know that at the discussion at the. At the, you know, at the board meeting, somehow it came up, and there were all kinds of questions about, you know, the confusion about what our, what our role as trustees. And, you know, can we, can we say we can, you know, all kinds of questions that. This clears up that we do not have the authority to, you know, to say how long we're going to be on the board, or it just, it clears it up.
So I added just a note in here right now to add a footnote in later. That says trustees are nominated by each member of the board supervisors and appointed by the board supervisors.
Yeah, I think that's probably enough.
Okay, it's not actually referring to the code, I just stuck the note in there, kind of funny, so.
Yeah, right, okay, that's good, thank you.
Of course.
Where are we now?
Section where we are.
Are we on four? Right, so, yeah, so now we're on four, so this is the duties of the board. And again, we've, you know, we have the code, refer to the code.
I'm sorry, I was muted and I was trying to say something and I didn't realize I was muted. No, because I, yeah, I thought that was really good information that they. The only way that trustee can be removed is by action of the full board. I mean, that issue came up.
Or the supervisor.
Yeah, and I, I think that, that that could go into the footnote as well.
Yeah.
And the idea, no, they're not appointed, they don't serve at the pleasure. You know, they serve.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that is really, I think those questions came up during our, our big television. Publicity, yeah.
Yeah, that's good.
I think that's great, yeah, that's good. This is very timely, this is, this is good that we're doing it, I think, very timely. Okay, so where are we? So now we're on four, is everybody with me?
Yes.
Okay, has everybody had a look at this and? We're happy with the way it reads, yeah, me too. Okay, so number five.
So hey, can I just ask a question? So some of the document that we're looking at here on the shared screen has redline in it where we made the changes and other sections don't. And I'm wondering, is this? So for instance, if you scroll down on Article, the elections are, we did a lot of redlining here. And this is a clean version here, but not a clean version above, is this all supposed to be a clean version?
I thought it was, yeah.
It is a clean version, the only addition so far is of the note where the new footnote is going to be from your edits today.
Why are these, are these links?
Yeah.
It appears blue.
Yeah, those are all hyperlinks to different library, county, and state websites.
Okay, never mind, that was a stupid question, sorry, okay.
No, it's good to clear it up, yeah, it's good, yeah, because I think that we decided that we really needed the links to. If people were investing, you know, looking online, they could really get the full picture, not just. Our version, okay, so now where are we, elections? Okay, you know, I think we went over that through thoroughly the last time.
Yeah. And it ended up being quite a bit shorter, which is nice.
Which is good, yeah. Now I had, so nomination, the nominations, I did have. The question on F, where it says additional nominations under three, additional nominations may be made at the May or June meeting from the floor. On June, at the June meeting, we vote.
Yes.
So my question is, if somebody decides to make a nomination at the June meeting, just before we vote. In other places. Where it talks about majority voting on number five, Terms of Office. On letter D, it says that five day notice show of such a note, of such an election will be given, and then on E, five days notice of such election be given. And also, the board packets from five days before a meeting, so. Board members will have a chance to read them, I'm wondering. If we should take out that nomination can be thrown in at the last minute at the June meeting.
We talked about this.
Yeah, but I still have questions. Questions, especially since five days comes up several times. As we go forward.
Well, you all can make whatever decision you'd like, you can choose to continue to allow nominations from the floor at the June meeting, you could say they have to maybe five days before the June meeting. The notification of the elections, the five day process for that is for the actual election itself, I don't think it's tied to the specific people who have been nominated, it's just to make sure that people can attend the meeting. That's, that would be my interpretation of it, so you all have the autonomy to decide what you would like to do about how long you'll allow. Self-nominations or nominations from others.
Right. Mary, could you review, could you remind me why we decided that we would allow them all the way up to the?
Okay, so at the time, I want to remember, I could be wrong, I think I said, I think I was in favor of not having nominations from the floor in June. At the meeting, but people felt that it certainly doesn't do any harm, why not? If somebody thinks about it after the May meeting and they decide they would want a position of leadership. Then they can just put their name in, it doesn't give the rest of the trustees very much time to think about it, but honestly, like, who cares, okay, so they'll think about it at the floor, so there was this just general sense of. You know, why not, we've been doing it that way, it hasn't caused any real damage, we should keep going to do it the same way.
That's sort of my recollection, too.
But, you know, and I'm fine with leaving it as is, that they can come in at May or June.
So I'm the minority, what about you, Gary, what do you think?
Doesn't matter to me. Unless there was some problem where someone became ill or something like that, we wouldn't want to have to wait another whole months to.
Good idea, that's a good point, yeah, that's a good point. Okay, I just, I just thought I'd throw it in, it just. Yeah, we've had such a smooth sailing in our board meetings that, you know, it's like just finding somebody who's going to willing, has chanced to be willing to take on, you know, the leadership role, but. Yeah, I'm fine with it, too, yeah, okay.
I have a, I have a question on section three, letter C, where we have capitalized the word trustee. Which I think it should not be capitalized, it's not capitalized. In other sections, and it's when it's used that way, I mean, if it's the Fairfax County Library Trustee, it is capitalized, but like that, it's not supposed to be so, just to be consistent.
I have uncapitalized it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so we're fine with, with section three, okay, section four, anything, any? Everybody's fine with that?
Oh, that's fine, that's good.
Okay. And then Terms of Office, section five. Okay, and those five days that I mentioned have to do with making sure that people have enough notice to make a meeting as opposed to. Okay. Okay, it's fine with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, number six, Duties of Officers. Okay, this is where we. Got into the Library Foundation election, right?
No. That was before.
Not before, but, you know.
Yeah.
It's. Okay, and everybody, everybody's read this one and it's happy with it, yeah. In section two, the vice chair shall act in absence of the chair, and shall perform any other duties assigned by the chair. Section three, the secretary shall. Everything's fine there? Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, and section four, the representative of the Library Board. Shall.
Ironically, it says report quarterly on the activities of Fairfax Library Foundation, so. It's always on the agenda, but they, the minutes say they only report quarterly, but. I think it only, it says, I think it says report quarterly because the Board of Directors meetings for the foundation are quarterly, but there might be stuff to say, like, come to the Jubilee in advance. So I don't know if you want to just say, report on the activities.
Yeah, I'm fine if you don't, I, yeah, I don't, I mean, it was just like, there's. It's fine, I'm fine without it.
Yeah. Because we don't, yeah, oops. Alright, I was slipping into the committee thing, but yeah, that's right. Unless it confirms that the, that the foundation representative actually attends meetings quarterly, is, is that just assumed?
Well, the board, the foundation board meets quarterly, and the library, the trustee representative is an ex officio member.
Right.
And does attend.
So the assumption.
Or is expected to attend.
Exactly, that's what I'm.
And then I had talked to Lisa about preparing a bullet list for. That person, so that they would actually have something to report that came from the foundation, so that's.
Right.
Well, so, so maybe this, this little thing here should, should have a line, A should be that the representative should.
Oh, that's true.
Attend, yeah, attend the quarterly. Oh, yeah, it's better, services.
Ex, ex officio director.
No, the, the foundation representative is not an ex officio member because they.
Yes.
Yeah, they need to be a full member.
Yeah, they are.
But we, we have that in, right, as an ex officio.
No, but it should, it should be ex officio voting director, just, and the reason is that I, I'm not sure if you were at that meeting, I had researched that definition, ex officio means voting. But we went round and round on that because it wasn't, people didn't know that, myself included, until I did some research, so. That's why we say the secretary shall serve as an ex officio voting director, and so the same thing for. The, yeah, right there, as an ex officio.
Okay.
And when it's an adjective, it's hyphenated, if you just say ex officio, yeah, we go good. So maybe, yeah, so maybe a. Should it first they serve and then they report?
Yeah.
I'll fix the lettering on her.
And attends, you just want to say attends, foundation warming, there you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, right, I remember the big long.
I guess reports on the activities, then. Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah, that was, that's good, yeah, I remember the big long discussion, but I hadn't written down the definition, and then I had to do it all over again, I didn't. So, okay, fine, okay, number six, seven meetings. So regular meetings, held each month. Special meetings. Public location, emergency, simple majority, okay, that's fine with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, the number eight, the committees. Okay, I think that's clear, yeah. Okay, and Article nine, Parliamentary Authority, Roberts, Rules of Order, and we didn't give an addition, but just current, so, yeah.
I think that was actually a prior edits, it had, it had had an older addition in there, and you opted to change it just to the current addition.
Yeah, right, yeah, and then Article ten, Amendment of Bylaws. Okay. And then we're down to our. Footnotes.
Yeah, and we'll add in that new footnote number two regarding appointments and nomination by the board supervisors.
And then I had some ideas on the Library Foundation footnote.
Yeah.
I have a copy of the. Foundation footnote, or bylaws. And if we want to put that language in there, I don't know if that would be good. But at any rate, I would like also to, for sure, to clarify. Well, see, the, okay, here's the language from the foundation footnote, I just keep saying that, from the, from their bylaws. The Director of the Fairfax County Public Library, the Chair of the Fairfax County Public Library Board of Trustees. And a member elected annually by the Fairfax County Library Board of Trustees shall serve as ex officio voting members. So maybe if we put in, does it, would it make sense? To put in their language? Then it's straightforward, that's what it is. So you'd be like, it's a, yeah. Do you want me to just?
Can you read it again?
Yeah. The Director of the Fairfax County Public Library. The Chair of the Fairfax County Public Library Board of Trustees. And a member elected annually by the Fairfax County Library Board of Trustees. Shall serve as ex officio voting members. And, and then just as an aside, it's interesting, in the foundation bylaws, then the next sentence is, the executive director of the foundation shall be an ex officio non-voting member, so they specify that as well, so it's. Nice to have it like that.
Sheila, do you, are you, are you good with that, you want me to keep that in?
Yeah.
Gary, you good as well?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I've got a question on the first footnote, is Christine implying that we should use magistrate, magisterial district?
Oh, she has, she has that, let me see.
She implied that, so the question was, does Fairfax County have a preference between magisterial district or supervisory district, district, excuse me? And the Virginia Code that speaks to urban county executive form of government, just use the term district. So you can use district, the county uses magisterial district in some of our documentation, so if you wanted to leave it exactly. If you wanted to change it, you could either remove the word supervisor or change the word supervisor to magisterial, and either one of those would be consistent with other county documentation.
I move that we do that.
Change it to, leave it or change it to magitary, magisterial.
Change it.
Change it. Anything else?
No, it looks beautiful.
It does.
So this goes in as a consideration item for March. March, and then we vote in May, April, God, I skipped a whole one, okay.
Yes, so what I will do is, in your March board packets, you'll have both a copy, you'll have a copy of the current bylaws. You'll have an amended copy, so all the track changes will be in both from today and from all your previous sessions, so that anyone can look at it and see exactly where all the changes are. And then we'll include a clean, recommended, revised copy, so that you can easily read this well, so you have three different documents in there, since this one's got a lot of changes.
I thought that was great with the, with Policy W at the last meeting, that as the consideration item, have you all three versions, I think that's a really. And maybe they've always done it that way, but I don't remember that, but that's a great way, it's good.
Yeah, agreed.
Now, I have a question, we, that we have worked this, what, this is our third time, and we've made, we clarified, we've. We've, you know, we've made it more readable and condensed it. Do you think that there'll be a lot of discussion among? Our board members, or do you think that it will just be, oh, it looks fine?
I mean, we made a lot of changes, so I think you need to anticipate there will be discussion.
So what I was wondering, because we have worked this over, and for example, I think the. The largest change, the biggest, most significant change has been the, the foundation representative, I'm wondering if we. If one of us has, like Fran has had, has spent a lot of time working and doing the background work on this, be ready to answer those questions, rather than, you know, just have them. You know, really, really be ready for them, so Fran, would you be willing to take on questions about the, you know, about the foundation, if they, if they come up?
A couple of things, it's interesting is that it, it was, it is the same as it was, because it always had been an elected, and then somehow, over time. Different chairs had missed, had not read the bylaws and just appointed, and then, so it was upon review, and I, I don't, I mean, I have. I don't know why I have such strong feelings of leaving it as the elected and include, and which is why I wanted the language from the foundation, because I, you know, as our, sort of like a partner, I don't want to. Have that, and Lisa even said, don't make us do our bylaws again. But I, so, but then, so that's one point, then the other one is, as. The issue of the chair. You know, sort of putting a thumb on the scale of a discussion, I just wonder about that, whether it would be better, you know, I sort of see myself as moderator or not, Miriam, no, go ahead.
I mean, something like this, that you've been so involved in, you're providing an explanation, I don't, no one's going to be unduly. I don't, no one's going to be unduly influenced because you are the chair. I know you wield awesome power, but I don't think that you should.
Don't bring me down. Fine, yeah, I'll be glad to.
I mean, since we all were kind of surprised, I guess none of us have really studied the bylaws the way we should. So just as an explanation or some of the background, since you have been on the board, but if you don't, you know, but if you think that's, I'd be happy to do it, too. So I just wondering to spread around some of the fun.
I think, you know, I think it came up last time because it was kind of isolated and it was new. And, and I, I bet now, I don't know, I just feel like now it's the whole package. And I think with a good introduction of, you know, we've sort of rearranged, put it in better order, tidied it up.
Yeah. Right.
Take it or leave it. No.
Right, but since we haven't.
But, but it's good to anticipate. You're right.
And we haven't been electing this position, so, you know, it will be a surprise to, to some people, maybe, yeah. Are there any other points? Is there anything else in here that, I mean, we've worked this over so often that it just seems to flow nicely. I don't think there's anything else in here that would need more of an explanation, but I just want to throw it out. If anybody felt strongly about one section or another and wanted to field questions if they came up, that's what I was asking. Like Gary, the, you know, shouts and wills and ayes come up sometimes. I mean, I never paid attention to those words until I started working on bylaws with you. I don't know whether anybody else on the board will, if they'll even notice them, but. Okay.
The one thing I would suggest maybe is that because, well, I guess they have between March and April to look at this, but I would, I'd suggest that you suggest that people actually read through it before the meeting.
I intend.
Drag over, and it's only so many meetings we want to talk about this.
Right.
Oh, that's exactly what I mean. I want it to be, I want it to be ready, you know, for us to, to field any questions that come up and have it done in April. I mean, yeah, I mean, I think that we've done a really good job. I mean, we've studied it and looked at it from lots of different angles. And Christine did a lot of good research for us, so I think we're ready. But I just wanted to make sure we, we have, since we do have new members on the board and they do have some wonderful questions, I just want to make sure that we're ready to answer them so they understand, you know, what's going on.
So on policy W, if I can, if I can bring, if we're done with bylaws.
Yeah, I was going to, yes, go, go. I was going to.
Because I was going to say that will be discussion. And you know, it's unpredictable. But Sheila, you want to handle that and I can help with. And because Jane and I do the monitoring of who's next, who's got their hands up. So I'll call on people.
Yes.
And I'll, I'll make a statement of like, you know, don't, don't put your hand up to taco to say the same thing over and over again. I'll say it nicer than that, but you know.
Yeah, and policy W, you know, after, you know, we've worked it and I was comfortable, I think we had, you know, we had, we had, we had touched on all our bases and then at the outreach meeting, Jessica, you were talking about people coming to the parking lot to access high, you know, the internet. And I thought, you know, does policy W embrace that? The library doesn't have to be open for somebody to pull up. And are they going to have to sit close into the, you know, the plaza? And will this be interpreted as misusing the library or a loitering?
I think I can happily talk to that at the full board meeting because we are purposefully adding exterior wifi to branches which will support it. We're also going to be purposefully designating certain parking spots where we know that the reception is the strongest.
Okay.
And it's not open 24/7. It turns off at midnight, I think. So it would still comply with the parameters that are set up in policy W because if somebody is, you know, hunkering down in a parking lot from midnight to 5:00 AM, they're probably just taking a nap there.
Yeah, but that's.
Not using the wireless.
But that's against the rules according to policy W, so, yeah, yeah. Right, right, because I reread policy W thinking, looking for loopholes, thinking, how is this going to, you know, somebody's there in the parking lot, looks like they're just, you know, getting ready to sleep there the night, but they're actually, you know, using, and everybody has a device. I mean, anybody in a parking lot, if you look at them, they're all, they all have their, you know, their noses in their cell phones or their iPad, so.
The biggest thing that policy W helps us with is people who have purposely left behind vehicles. So it's someone who has abandoned their vehicle or just had to leave it behind for some reason, or tires have been popped or things like that. So when we have them in a parking lot for two or three weeks, that's what really helps us with that policy because then we can contact someone to have it removed.
You can, right. And the other, the other part of policy W, and we worked this one, too, was, I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's the last one where the, if admin is not available, so it's a Sunday, for example, and calling the police, I think that.
It gives some latitude to the branch.
Right, yes, right, right, yeah. Yeah, but we made it clear that not anybody, no, not anybody on staff could just call, would be the person in charge for the day.
Yeah, and that's helpful at some of our locations where we're like right next to large housing complexes and folks are using the library a lot as overflow parking, and then library patrons can't park anywhere.
That's exactly right. Yeah, 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 yeah. But, right, but I can't anticipate any other questions. Can anybody else? Nope. Okay, and we did take out camping, that particular term, and I.
Yeah, a lot of the language was cleaned up and shortened so that it's just reflecting back to other code.
Exactly, good. Okay, so is there anything else? This is remarkable, 40 minutes.
I think we're good. Do you have any other policies on your list that we need to work on in the future? Because I think we went through pretty much everything that was on your original list.
Yeah. I haven't, Jessica, anything?
No, library staff haven't identified any that require an update either due to county or state changes or our own procedural updates. I'll take another look through and she'll all be in touch, but right now we don't have any that we've identified.
That's what I thought. Okay, right. Anything else? Gary?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, so I guess, so we don't need to find a time for another meeting. We're done.
Right now, no.
We're done. Okay, that's great. Well, thank you, everybody. And do we have to make a motion?
I have a question. So what, with ad hoc committees, will, will, will we keep you as a committee for a while in case something comes up? Or should we disband this ad hoc standard down? I guess not until after April anyway.
You should keep the committee standing. You don't have to have meetings. Okay. I, I mean, I think policy is a standing committee.
Policy is an ad hoc committee.
Ad hoc.
And Miriam is absolutely correct. You can, you can do whatever you'd like, but you should certainly keep this group in place at least until all of the policies that you are currently recommending amendments to have traveled all the way through the process in case they get referred back to the committee by the full board. Just in case you get the bylaws back again.
We're ready.
We're gonna, yes.
We could, we could name them in our sleep. Okay, so we, we are adjourned. Was somebody motioned to adjourn?
Don't move.
Who, second? Good, all right. Meeting is adjourned.
Nice to see you all.
Hey, lovely to see you. Good work.
Miriam, are you still planning to come to the Government Center tomorrow?